Good evening all, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Almost six o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Now I would like to open the regular city council meeting. July 7, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to continue handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do. For the protection of the public and our staff. Now I'm going to ask our city manager to give a brief explanation to the public. City manager.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference and video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders and as allowed by the governor's executive order N-29-20, which allows for a deviation from the teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see city council members and city staff who are appearing by way of remote video and telephone connections. City council meetings will only be held by teleconference or video conference until further notice. Today, the agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments by way of email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org. That's P-U-B-C-O-M@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five-minute time limit. We will try to check the email for additional public comments during the meeting if feasible. We are also trying a new format that allows the public to provide live public comment using the webinar feature in the Zoom app that is broadcasting this meeting tonight. Members of the public may use the link identified on the agenda to enter the webinar as attendees. Members of the public should be able to use the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know that you would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment. We request, as we do at typical in-person city council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and decide not to speak. If you do not see these features in the Zoom module you are using, it may be that your software is not up to date or because of another technical issue on the user's end. There will be an opportunity after the staff report for public comment on the item that has been reviewed by staff prior to council action. Again, attendees using Zoom webinar will need to use the raise hand feature in order to provide a comment after any particular agenda item. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, Mr. Hagler. Gina, may I have a real call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please rise for the silent prayer and flag salute. Flag salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic of America. Our justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Gina, may I have a e- please stand with me.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Community Meeting and Webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, July 10 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 11 at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Next, item B, council, any agenda approval, addition or deletion. Thank you. Next, and item C, presentation. There is one presentation special event co-sponsorship application park and recreation department.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're going to bring forward a presentation by the organizations that are applying for the City of Galt special event sponsorships. The purpose of the sponsorship is to set forth guidelines and criteria governing the granting of City of Galt funds or in-kind services for supporting local festivals, special events, community projects, or programs. Budget for the special event sponsorship program, including determination of the source of funding to offset this sponsorship program, was established on June 2, 2020 during the regular budget meeting. The amount of $7,000 was established. So what we're going to do is we've given these groups the opportunity to come forward and talk to you about their event. Next council meeting, we will have all your information of exact cost or estimated cost. And then what you'll do is approve up to $5,000 for each event, up to a maximum of $7,000 total. And then, so with that in mind, who do we have on the line, Rose?
We have Grace M., we have Bob Olson, Rochelle Herrendine, and Vet Trax Festival.
Okay. So if you'd like to allow one of them in, please, and if they can give their name. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We'll go ahead and allow Vet Trax to go first.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone, this is Eric Lewis from Vet Trax Festival.
Hi, this is Nicole Blackwell.
She's our client here of Vet Trax Festival. This year, with the pandemic COVID, we've been on a hiatus. We're still waiting for further guidance from the city supplemental health official. But we were asking for the donation in kind to help offset the cost for providing the police detail for our event. We've had it three years in Galt. With the generous support of the city council, we have prevented 17 suicides. Four of them were from Galt. And this event is, it's about giving back to the community, getting more people involved, bringing PTSD awareness. And, you know, the hardest thing for me as the president and the organizer is, I'm afraid what happens if we don't do this event? You know, because every year we have people come up to us and report that because of you guys, you, I'm not killing myself today. And that's the hardest thing to actually listen to because we have such an impact. And last year's event, it was awesome. We had no discrepancies at all. The police force was amazing, everything, you know, the City of Galt opened their hearts to us again. And they continue to do it and we want to keep it here. But, you know, the rising costs, the lack of sponsorship dollars due to the coronavirus, we're, you know, we're at the mercy of the city, the city council. So, I mean, it's hard, but, you know, we, there's obviously other organizations that need it too. So we just ask that we just be, you know, greatly considered and hold on one second.
Oh, hi, guys. I don't, you probably don't know much about me, I'm familiar with Rose. I work at FNM Bank. I've actually been a member of the community since I was nine. Been in school there, I've worked in there, worked in the community for that long, still do. This event is something that I've helped out with for the last two years, I believe it is, to bring PTSD awareness to light and to have a community event. When I think of a community event, I think of when the days when we used to have the Dairy Festival, if anyone remembers those, and the Strawberry Festival, where we get to, to see people that we haven't seen in a while, you know, other families that we might have gone to school with. And then it promotes social networking and community outreach. And this event, I was last year, I think it was bigger than the year before. Yeah, it was bigger than before. And just the amount of people and everybody smiling and having a good time is something that's kind of rare at big events like that. And that's why I love Galt so much. So we just want you to take into consideration, we've had it there many years. We would like to continue to have it there. We just need a little bit of help, just like we have in the previous years with the police department and all that good stuff. And we just want to keep the tradition alive and keep the awareness of the, the whole point of the festival is that people do have PTSD, I actually suffer from it myself. And music is a really, really good outlet for people to, that basically get better or realize that you're not alone. And it's amazing to see people that come up to you and talk to you in the booths and whatnot. That I, it's just, well, yeah, I'm so glad we had this event, you know, and it's, it's great, it's a good community event. So, that's that.
So with that being said, we thank you for your consideration again, and we just hope everybody's staying safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to also, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to also add that although you guys are approving a funding amount or looking at funding amounts, we will be, you know, if we're not able to hold a festival or an event due to the coronavirus and the restrictions, we will not go forward with them. Yeah, just because you're approving it today doesn't mean that it'll go forward if the restrictions are in place not to hold that event.
Well, just to clarify, they aren't approving anything today, they're hearing from each of the agencies. You'll, at your next meeting, the council consider approval, is that right?
Yes, I'm sorry, at the next meeting, you'll, you'll be approving those days.
I believe this is your information, right, Tom and next?
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Ramondo, I have a question, what, what kind of in-kind thing we done with this group last year?
So what we did is we had the police patrol, that was in kind, the field rental, lighting and power, and that was the majority of the $5,000 cost that was granted last year.
Thank you. Any other council member have any comment or question, then I move to the next one.
Okay, so the next one, we will have Rachel Herrendine. Rachel, are you there?
I think so, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm trying to turn this on, sorry. Hi, guys, hi, Mayor, hi, Council, hi, staff. My name is Rochelle Herrendine, I'm with the Galt Chamber. And we have a couple of events that we're submitting applications on. So the first one is for Extravaganza for March 2021. And we're really sad this year due to COVID, we had to cancel the event. This was the 11th year we were going to do it. It's one of the largest free family community events. So we would like and we hope that we're able to have this next year. So that's the first event we had an application on. Another one we had was for a bridal showcase that was supposed to be coming up in the next couple of weeks. This bridal showcase is going to be an opportunity for local businesses to showcase, specifically for bridal and events. And so photographers, wineries, breweries, caterers, makeup, hair artists, photographers, everybody kind of in that realm. We wanted to try to get maybe even a home and auto show going at some point to give some of our local businesses opportunity to get people in front of them and help them with their business. So that we don't have a date for as of right now because of the restrictions. So we're hoping to get just a floating date for that. So when things are lifted and we're able to have an event of that size again, to have one of the facilities for that, the Littleton Center. We are withdrawing our application for the Prime Volleyball for next year, or actually it was for this year. And so that one, we don't have to worry about. We had also talked about teaming up with Galt Police Department and helping them with an awards dinner. And so every year they do an awards dinner and possibly making that a community event. In addition, we are excited to continue to work with the city for the Winter Bird Festival, pairing it with the wine, beer, and food next year, as well as we hope that Lighting of the Night Parade can happen. And we could have a community event, it's the largest parade that we have. And there's an opportunity for a lot of family things to happen in the Littleton Center. And so we're looking forward to that as well. So thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Next, we have Grace M. Grace, if you're there, can you hear us?
If I need to unmute myself, can you hear me now?
Yes, we could hear you go.
Okay, Grace Wilson from the Galt Sunrise Rotary. Our application is for our annual community dinner that we do for the community at Christmas time. With COVID in that, we are working very closely right now with the club to figure out how we would be able to make this happen. Since, you know, social distancing in the civic center for 1,000 people that walk in and eat their meal and then leave, you know, could be quite a challenge. We're not going to take back our application at this point because we're still working through it. Our application includes rental of the Littleton Center and of course, you know, use of the facilities and the baking ovens and refrigerator and all that that goes along with preparing the meal. Hopefully, we'll be able to have this happen. If it doesn't happen, this will be the first time in 10 years that we've not been able to give back to the community for the Galt Sunrise Rotary. That's all I have to say, we're just hoping and praying that something happens and we're able to move forward with it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Grace, thank you.
Thank you.
Always, maybe the next one.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment?
Yes.
I don't know if Grace is still there, but I was going to ask her if she's still listening. That I know in the past, you guys have done, you know, a lot of takeout dinners for people that couldn't attend. So although I would like to be optimistic that by November or December, that we can be through this to a point where we can have that event because it's such a big deal to the community. But I was just wondering if you guys had maybe thought ahead of possibly making arrangements where we could do some kind of food delivery to families, where we just cook at the facility and then, and then deliver. So I, just an idea, you might want to think of like a plan B in case we get closer to that and doesn't look like it's going to be possible, we could still have something. So anyways, I'll throw that out there.
Yeah, Sean, we have a new president that's just started July 1. And we've been sitting down and we've actually been looking at different possibilities. We were even thinking of the possibility of doing it all like a drive-through setting, where you would have the takeouts, have the trays ready. People drive through, say I've got four families, get four meals and they're on their way. So we do have some options, I will bring that up when we have our meeting to the incoming president. It's going to be a challenge, I agree with you on that. But yeah, no, we are looking at any type of a possibility, so thank you for that suggestion.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Bob Olson.
Myself, good evening, I'm representing the Galt High Alumni Association. I appreciate the opportunity. This would have been our 30th year having our dinner. Primary purpose of not only get the alumni together, but also to provide money for scholarships for Galt High graduates. Our dinner was scheduled for the 30th of, or the 3rd of October. Given what's happening, the, the association made the decision to cancel for this year. As I am probably among the average of the age group of the attendees, we just didn't figure was, anything was going to be opening up that for that large of a group. But I do thank you for, you know, taking our application. I will be back next year because hopefully we will be able to have our 30th plus one annual dinner and continue to raise funds for Altai graduating seniors. We're trying to figure out how we're going to do some soliciting of our membership, which we have about 1,800. And so that we can give scholarships this next year even, even without the dinner. But again, thank you for supporting the Galt organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, thank you. Any council member, any question, any discussion on that? And this is the last one, Rose, right?
No, we have another one, we have Becca Dennis.
Right, council member, any other comment on this?
No.
No, could you move to the next one, please?
So Becca, if you can hear me, you're up next.
Hey, hi, I'm Becca Dennis, I am the active use director at Liberty Ranch High School. And we have put in an application for our homecoming parade, our annual homecoming parade through the elementary schools near us that feed into our school. We don't know what the football schedule will be at this time, we're not even sure if there will be a football game at that point. But we are hoping to still do some sort of parade or at least possibly have the option of it. If social distancing regulations don't allow us, then of course we'll be canceling it. But we are already looking at ways to have the kids social distance and maybe alter the way in which the parade is run. So that would be at the end of October, so almost like a harvest parade. And so we greatly appreciate any consideration to help us with that, with the policing staff to keep that parade safe.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Now, just to confirm, there's a, there's two. There, we have Liberty Ranch and Kiwanis, but I don't see their names on the attendees. So if you are someone who's not, the name's not recognizable, if you want to raise your hand, we can give you a chat, your organizations that would like to speak on their. Okay, Mayor, there's no more hands raised, you can go ahead and we'll close that, we'll finish that up.
Well, Stella, I would like to ask all the council member if they have any comment or any discussion at this time of the special event co-sponsorship application.
Mayor, can I interrupt before? I just want to let you know that this, that this was not a required requirement by the organizations. As Rose said, that this was just an opportunity for them to come in and talk. We did have three other people that didn't come in, so, but their applications and information will be forwarded to council at the next meeting. I just didn't want you to think that that was all of them, so.
Thank you. If there is no discussion from any council member or from anybody, then I would like to move to the next.
Mr. Mayor, I.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, just a quick question. Last year was obviously a year ago. Ramondo, or Mr. Solis, what, what was the total dollar amount that we were able to provide last year? And as opposed to this year?
So right now, we're looking at, let me with, take out the Galt High Alumni, looking at about 11,000, 11, under $12,000 for this year. And last year, we looked at it about, about 23. We had, we also had a couple of people drop out at the last minute when we talked to them, we had the FFA dinner on the Fourth Street Promenade. They've dropped out and the request due to the COVID. And the chamber has removed some of the requests, as Rochelle had talked about. So there, there's quite a big difference. Tiny Smiles is not, had not submitted for this year, so there is a big cost there, savings too. So we're looking at about 11.5 right now.
Thank, thank you for that, it's just so unfortunate that this, I mean, clearly this COVID-19 has had a huge impact, not only on the, the city, but, but our community in general. And, and it's just sad to me to see that some of these events are not going to happen this year. And, and so I look forward to the next, next meeting, looking at what options we have in terms of supporting our, our local nonprofits as best we can. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Solis, I have a comment for you.
Yes.
Yeah, along with what Rich said, it's, you don't realize how many events we have in town until we don't have them and then you realize how many there was. My question is, if we have a group that is, that is, is applying and that we approve the funding for and then they end up not having the event or it gets canceled, will that just roll over to next year? Or we, I mean, because obviously they'll probably apply next year, so they're not going to actually get, you know, given twice, so will, will you just figure out the math come next year when they apply or how that work?
The, the money does not roll over. And so basically, if it's not used, it goes back into the fund, funding source it came from.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council member, any other comment? If not, then I'm going to move the next public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limit. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS. One written comment.
Okay, go ahead.
From Jerry Soder. The Planning Commission meeting on July 9th, 2020 has the Corillian Boulevard corridor plan on the planning agenda. I am disappointed that the agenda materials being presented make it appear as though there was significant unity involvement and meetings with lots of input on the project. I only recall two community meetings, but only two pre-. Were presented. I remember in one of the safety committee meetings that was one committee member saying how there would be many different plans and meetings for the community as there were with the A and C Street overpass project. I don't recall anyone in attendance being reported of this magnitude of a project, 11 roundabouts to solve some of concerns about safety on Corillian. I also think that many people that live off Corillian have no idea what's being proposed, such as the large number of roundabouts and fill the road meets communities. There are walkers and cyclists out all the time. Taking on this magnitude of a project is akin to selling the drafty house instead of fixing the draft. We have other road and infrastructure issues, but are choosing to devote resources to chase grant for a project that supposedly will improve a road that already is one of the best in the city. Pandemic and stage budget states. Because that money comes from the state in our taxes. I also think how in the report it states that it will just divert traffic to other roads like Marengo just shows the idiocy of the project. You're going to divide, divert traffic off Corillian to other roads and just push traffic and the associated issues to adjacent streets. With the 1999 construction going on now, I think my biggest issue with the projects is presented. It's just the area disruption and build out that would be required of the project. Roundabouts require full road closures and detours. And this will be a lot of neighborhood disruption for zero gain. My home actually backs up to Corillian and quite frankly, I don't want a large-scale construction in my backyard. I know a council member will say this doesn't represent the whole city, but when two public meetings. Is that best? I think you need to be. And the alternative. Thank you. That's all the written comments I have received.
Anybody on the Zoom webinar?
There is no hands raised.
So any council member want to make a comment on, on that? Uh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. Hubert, there was, um, uh, some intermittent audio issues going on. Um, and, and I don't know if it was so much that we needed red back, but would you mind emailing that out to the council? Uh, just so that we get the full, full message in the event that we missed anything.
Yes, I will send you all.
I appreciate it.
And so the council's aware. We place all of those on the website as well.
All right. Any other council member, any comment? If it's not, then I'm going to move to the next agenda item. E. Report by City Council Member on Regional Board, Commission and Committee, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I'll be brief. On, uh, June 18th, we had a, um, SA-COG board meeting. Um, we did, um, quite a bit of, uh, business, um, but, but I, I, I just want to point out a, a couple of things. One, uh, was, um, there's, uh, going to be a big push right now to establish green zones and some, and, and in support and then also support, uh, the SA-COG Green Means Go project. If you remember last year, uh, SA-COG, or the organization went to the governor and asked for, uh, quite a bit of funding. We knew it was a heavy lift, uh, understanding that, uh, it may or may not happen. Uh, but this year, uh, the plan was to go back out, out, uh, out and, uh, and secure that funding through the budget process. Well, now with, um, with the pandemic and the, uh, state finances in, in kind of a question mark, it, it did not get into the, the budget, but, um, they are going to continue to do some advocacy, um, around it and, uh, through the governor's Economic Recovery Task Force. And so, uh, there's still, um, things moving in that direction i- in terms of Green Means Go. Um, there's also a big push to, uh, reduce vehicle miles traveled. Um, I think I mentioned in the last meeting that prior to the pandemic, um, the region, the six-county region had an average of about 65,000 miles traveled per day. Uh, and then, uh, right after the pandemic and everything shut down, we went down to about 14,000. That's gone now back up to about 35,000 vehicle miles traveled per day. So, um, what SA-COG is doing is seeing what part they could play in, uh, assisting, uh, not only government, but private industry and, and kind of doing a public, private partnership as it relates to, uh, telecommuting and what we, what can be done to support that. So, um, and I, and I, I think we need to continue as long as, uh, to continue as a city, looking at, uh, the effects of telecommuting and, and what it might do after the pandemic and, um, and, and as an option for not only for employees, but for efficiency of, of our government, uh, so long as it doesn't affect the customer service piece. So, um, the, uh, there is going to be a webinar. Uh, I wanted to point out, uh, at our last meeting, we passed a resolution to ask, uh, the, the city manager to appoint, um, someone to, uh, be our advocate, uh, with SA-COG about the 2020 funding round. Um, and, and how, how those funds are dispersed through the agencies and, uh, Mr. Selling is going to be the person to do that. Um, but there's going to be a webinar, um, on Thursday. I believe it's from nine to 10. Or, um, and Mr. Son, you could help me out here if, if I've missed something. Uh, nine to 10 is just gonna be informational only. Uh, but then there's going to be, uh, some additional, um, webinars that will have folks interact, uh, with the process and provide their input to SA-COG staff on, uh, what, uh, what, uh, the funding round should look like. Um, so if you have the opportunity on, on Thursday, the 9th, um, to take a look at that. And like you said, I believe it's at, uh, at nine o'clock, but I'd have to double check that.
Good.
Yeah, maybe just to clarify, Vice Mayor Lozano, uh, they're gonna release it. It's gonna be a video recording on Thursday. They're gonna release it at nine. So you won't have to watch it in real time. You can watch it at your leisure, uh, just to level set. And then Friday morning at nine, they will have an open, uh, comment opportunity. So.
Okay.
Something else in the future too. Sorry.
Yeah, that has been, uh, quite the fluid. Uh, there's been lots of emails coming around about that in the last couple of days. So, uh, thanks for that clarification. So, um, but anyhow, I, I, I appreciate, uh, the council's support, uh, for this, uh, moving forward. Um, to, to address the funding round issues and, and some, uh, equity issues, I think in terms of, uh, cities and stuff. So, um, that is all I have for the, um, uh, SA-COG report and, uh, and I have nothing else. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, council member Campion.
Uh, yes, um, on the, uh, June 22nd, we had a, uh, meeting of the South County Habitat Preservation, uh, JPA. Um, at that time, uh, several purchase agreements were approved, uh, acquiring lands or interested lands as well as approving the budget for the year. Uh, it was relatively, relatively short meeting, uh, but the, that were the highlights of the, uh, of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Lanson.
Uh, yes, we have not been having our youth commission meetings, but we, except for one, but we do have some youth on the agenda tonight with our new members. And we will have a meeting, um, next week if people want to tune in. Also, the air quality board, uh, for, for when their meeting this month, but they did send out some information on how all these fireworks were polluting, um, the air with all their emissions. So it, it was a noticeable difference with everyone lighting off the fireworks. And also today I was up near Watt Avenue and there was, the whole place was covered with smoke. Cause there was a big fire up there. So people need to be careful. We're gonna have some spare the air days. Need to stay inside away from that also. And that's about it.
Thank you. Council member Farmer.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I lost my, uh, internet. And so I'm gonna continue on by telephone, uh, but I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. You know, I have nothing to report, but we have a STH meet, special meeting next week. Uh, I will report back to you, uh, next meeting. Thank you. Uh, next agenda item is information consent calendar. Tina may have to read from item one through five, please, and the action.
Uh, yes, uh, one, accept the minutes as submitted. Minutes of the special meeting of June 16th, 2020, regular medium, June 16th, 2020, special meeting of June 19th, 2020, and special meeting of June 29th, 2020. Uh, receive and file warrants for a period ending June 24th, 2020. Adopt ordinance 2020 dash 03 of the City Council of the City of Galt acting in its capacity as the legislative body of the City of Galt Community Facilities District 2020 dash one Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, authorizing the levy of a special tax in such community facilities dis- district. Adopt a resolution one, authorizing the city manager to enter into a two-year agreement with the Asian Community Center to provide the senior nutrition lunch program at the Chabola Community Center. Two, authorizing the city manager at his or her sole discretion to enter into three annual renewals of this agreement and three waiving all rental fees of the Chabola Community Center. And number five, accept the treasures report as submitted.
Thank you. Uh, prove the consent calendar. A moved motion. Second. Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by council member Lamson. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Council member Farmer.
Aye.
Council member Campion.
Aye.
Council member Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. Thank you. Uh, next agenda, schedule matter, uh, notice of public hearing. And then there is no notice of public hearing. Next agenda item, H, like, regular calendar. City Manager's Office, subject approval of new job classification and salary for Economic Development Manager. You, Mr. Agler.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, our, uh, Human Resources Director, uh, Stephanie Van Stein will be providing this particular report.
Yes, uh, good evening, Council and Mayor. Uh, before you this evening is a resolution to adopt the Economic Development Manager Job Classification. And attached to the staff report includes the proposed job specification or job description. Human Resources has also conducted a compensation review on the classification. And we are recommending that the classification be based on the mid-management salary schedule at wage grade 60. And this change is the second part to restructuring in the administration department. And as you may recall, in June, the Assistant City Clerk Job Classification was approved. And those changes with underfilling the clerk administrator and the vacancy of the executive assistant left an overall financial savings. And part of that savings will be applied to fund the Economic Development Manager Classification. Um, there is a current incumbent who's been working for the city in a part-time position who will be reclassified as the Economic Development Manager at a reduced work schedule. And the vacancy savings from the budgeted part-time position will also be applied to fund the new job classification. Um, overall, with both of the changes in the administration department, there remains an overall savings of approximately $9,600 per month or over $115,000 per year. And at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Uh, any council member have any question or discussion on this?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Yeah.
Councilman Farmer.
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So the, the position is basically being, uh, the old position of project managers is being vacated. Um, and that person, the person, um, uh, Ms. Mendez currently serving in that position will be moved to a new position that we are creating, which will be more of a full-time position. However, she will only be working at about three quarters time in that position. Is that correct, Stephanie?
That is correct. So, um, I had the finance department cost out the, um, expense for the Economic Development Manager position at three-quarter times. So that cost shown in the staff report is based on three-quarter times.
Okay. And then my next question is, um, the, uh, after we did the reorganization of the clerk positions, um, and then now by vacating the project manager and creating this new one, the, the net savings is what at this point by doing all of that? We're still at a net savings of how much?
Yeah. So, um, I think it's on the last page of the staff report. Um, so with all the changes combined that you approved in June, and if you approve this evening, um, the overall $600 per month or $115,000 per year. Um, and that is based on the reduced schedule. Um, filling the Economic Development Manager position at a reduced schedule.
Right, right. Yeah, I just want the public to understand, um, cause I've had some people, um, contact me regarding this and, and there was a little bit of confusion. They were thinking that we were creating a brand-new position. And I just want to make that clear so that it's understood the people that are watching that we're not creating a new position. We're, we're actually, well, we are creating a new position, but we're vacating the old one and, and moving somebody in a new classification. So technically it's not a, it, it's not a, um, an overall cost. Um, and so, uh, and then last, can you, uh, maybe, maybe Tom, our city manager can, can jump in on this. Can you just kind of summarize, uh, you know, what exactly this position is? Like what, what does Ms. Mendez do? What, what is the job of the, uh? Thank you.
That's an excellent question because one of the things that I wanted to point out is that, uh, as, uh, the Human Resources Director articulated a little earlier, this current position is working in a part-time temporary capacity for the last few years. And by establishing the economic, but she has been, uh, performing duties as an Economic Development Manager. That's really been her working title because that's what she was, uh, brought in to do. But there has never been a classification specification established for Economic Development. And so here what we're doing is really formalizing that. And, uh, we, it, in your agenda packet, uh, I know that you, you looked at this, um, because we talked about it earlier, uh, but, um, it, it lists all of the responsibilities that she currently undertakes now. It documents that it, it puts into, uh, a, uh, very cogent format, uh, the types of duties that she'll take on. But let me describe them in a nutshell. Really, she is going to serve as, uh, and has been serving as one of the first points of contact for new business and industry wanting to, uh, take a look at the City of Galt. She responds to, uh, proposals or, uh, information requests provided by the Governor's Office of Economic Development, uh, by, uh, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. When they steer folks our way, uh, things like that. She works with existing businesses. Recruitment and retention is, uh, first and foremost. And so, um, or retention is foremost. And so, um, or retention is foremost, I should say, and then, and then really recruitment. And one of the things that this position will do is work with our existing businesses, whether they're industrial clients or retail clients, uh, to help them grow. And that may be, we, we look at some of our industrial clients right now that are planning on expanding their facilities, uh, in our industrial park. Uh, she is a central part of helping them as really an economic development ombudsman through our approval process, through the, 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 the planning process and all the steps uh, as those particular projects make their way either to the Planning Commission, uh, or the, uh, city council, if that's appropriate as well. And then one of the other items that, um, I, I placed in this particular job description, yeah, and this is a, uh, portion of the job that flows from what was, uh, uh, the, the, the pre- or the, uh, the clerk administrator position, and it will now flow over to Economic Development, uh, is Public Information Officer duties. And, and so, um, our current incumbent has demonstrated a proficiency, uh, at, uh, serving as P I O, putting together, uh, a lot of materials on behalf of the city. You see them a lot of times at city council meetings, of course. But then those things get translated either into a press release or some sort of story, trying to get the city's name out there. And so because of her capabilities in that arena, especially this, uh, job description envisions that the Economic Development Manager can also be the Public Information Officer for the city. Uh, and I just might add, from an emergency management standpoint, when we talk about COVID nineteen and what we've been dealing with, uh, since, uh, the beginning of March, the incumbent has been there, uh, every step of the way. She has prepared, uh, the COVID nineteen webpage, the, uh, business, uh, webpage and portal for them to gain information about, uh, state and federal programs available to them. So, uh, it just, uh, seems to fit hand in hand with, uh, her, uh, acumen and experience in that way. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Farmer?
Yes, it does. And, and thank you very much for clarifying that. I just wanted, you know, people that are not familiar with who she is, because like you said, she's only worked in a partial capacity up until now. And she kind of, you know, does a lot behind the scenes, so you don't see her, um, you know, uh, in the meetings, council meetings, a lot unless she's doing presentations. But I, I think it's great. Um, you know, she's really good about being, you know, as a business owner myself. She, she's been, you know, a liaison to existing businesses, which is so important to myself. You know, um, reaching out to existing businesses, talking about their concerns and, and, and think, you know, helping, helping, uh, you know, I guess, uh, say nurture ideas that maybe they have on how to be better in the community. Um, so it's not just all about, you know, going after new business. She, she does a lot to try to, um, you know, help, uh, what we have here and, 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 and cultivate that even more. And so I'm excited that this will give her, you know, more latitude to do that. And, um, and then the, the, the whole P I O part of it, you know, the Public Information Officer duties is exciting, because that's something that I think a lot of us from the council have, have wanted to see, uh, more of a role developed on that. So I'm, I'm excited. I think it's a good thing, and I'm, I'm glad we're able to do all this, uh, you know, shifting around and such and ma- make it happen without, without actually costing us re- really any more money. So, um,
Right.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, thank you, Stephanie, for that.
This is a unique position that performs a unique role. And so we have, uh, created a, a, a unique discreet way, uh, through, uh, what you're appro- potentially approving here tonight to ensure that our economic development activities and, for that matter, our P I O activities can be, um, undertaken, uh, through this plan.
Thank you. Any other council member?
Yeah, I just wanna, um, say thank you, Tom, and, um, Amy and Chris for doing this. Um, Amy's been doing a lot for the city for a few years, trying to come up with things behind the scenes, sign, from signage to everything. So kind of nice to see this position, and I think she'll be fabulous as a P I O. So, um, great job.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion, any?
Uh, nothing really to add, other than what's been said. I, I agree with it. I think it's, uh, timely, and, uh, she does an excellent job.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor. Vice Mayor Lozano has a question.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse here. I, I, I want to echo, uh, everything that all of my colleagues have said. And, and, and again, I think, uh, Mr. Haglen, for your leadership, um, over the last several months as, as, uh, you know, we, we, um, struggle with budget issues. And, and this certainly was a way to, to, um, address that, but more importantly, address some of the needs uh, that the city has in terms of a job function. And I think we have great, uh, great staff that, uh, not only, uh, in the city clerk's office, but, but every, if, as you look through the phases of this, uh, really did a good job. And so I thank you for that. Uh, thank you for your leadership in that, in this arena. And, uh, I look forward to, uh, some things coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, you know, the last, yeah, I, I think my colleagues already, uh, said something, I, this job, I'm going to support that job. Because this job and Amy, whether it's a, a, as an economic development specialist, and that job is not for the economic development, it's really important for the city, not for this city, every city. So, and the other thing is this new job, they have a much more responsibility and are adding like another assigned duties on that job. And overall, I thank you for Tom. He reorganized the position. And at the end, we're still saving hundred and fifteen, almost thousand dollars a year. Uh, and I, and the other thing is, uh, I have no doubt in my mind, uh, Amy, Amy, she is doing the job, economic development. She's not bringing business outside. He's also going and also already doing the inside business. Like, in the, the business already is local. She helping. When anybody call her, she always be available. She get a, a good guidance. Or that would say she's the best qualified to do this. Oh, and I will go into support. And now I would, I would like to open to the public comment.
I have not received any public comments.
No.
I have no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to close the, uh, public comment. Council have last time any other comment on this one? Otherwise, I'm looking for entertaining a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, who is on the second, please?
Farmer.
Councilmember Campion, and second by Councilmember Farmer. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Page, thank God for you.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. Thank you.
All right, next, uh, agenda item is subject, uh, COVID nineteen update. Mister Haglen.
You are unmuted.
Yeah. Sorry. Uh, I wanted to go over with you some of the, uh,
Mister Haglen.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you do the update and also, uh, did I ask you about, a little bit about that, uh, county program we have, if you can?
I got it in here. Yep.
Thank you.
Um, so for our COVID update, uh, for tonight's council meeting, uh, as the council is generally aware, as the community may be aware, we're seeing a very significant increases in the infection rates, uh, in Sacramento County. But as you know, we straddle the border with, uh, San Joaquin County, and they're seeing very significant updates, uh, or, or increases as well. Um, they have more than tripled in, in just a couple of weeks' time. Uh, at one point, you may recall that San Joaquin County had about half the number of cases at Sacramento. Well, uh, a little earlier today, when I took the numbers, Sacramento was ca- uh, indicating a total of four thousand five hundred and sixty-six cases. Uh, they've had a few more deaths. There are seventy-six deaths in Sacramento County. In Galt, of which we're obviously a part, we have climbed to a hundred and seventy-eight COVID nineteen cases. That is a really dramatic increase, very significant increase for our city. And just by way of, uh, a, a little bit of comparison, um, we're sixty-seven. We have, uh, surpassed Folsom, so we're sixty-seven, uh, uh, cases ahead of Folsom, who has a population of approximately eighty-one thousand. And we're just three, uh, infection cases behind Citrus Heights, which has a, a population of approximately ninety thousand. Uh, San Joaquin County reports today, earlier today, fifty-six hundred total, uh, COVID cases and fifty-five deaths. Uh, San Joaquin County also reports, uh, very significant increases in total hospitalizations as well as intensive care unit usage. Because of the very significant spikes in COVID nineteen cases across the state, last week, the governor issued an order that all restaurants in nineteen specific, uh, California counties uh, showing serious outbreaks be closed to indoor dining. That includes Sacramento County. There is not a restaurant in Sacramento County nor in the city of Galt that should be offering indoor dining. Uh, the governor also closed all bars and group pubs in those same counties. Uh, and the Sacramento County Department of Public Health then updated its or- health order last Friday to res- reflect these, uh, same requirements. In, in some cases, uh, we're finding that the Sacramento County Health Order, uh, is a little more stringent than the, or restrictive than the state order, which is permissible. Restaurants may provide outdoor dining, but are mandated by law to separate tables by a minimum of six feet. Additionally, all employees in restaurants are mandated by law to follow the guidance for dine-in restaurants, which requires, amongst other things, that restaurant employees must wear masks and gloves and take other precautions, um, in protection of public health. Every restaurant has an affirmative responsibility to protect hu- public health in this manner. Uh, the Galt Pool opened on July first, twenty twenty. Uh, and it opened under specific, uh, approvals and guidance from the Sacramento County Department of Public Health. The pool is operated differently than it was before, and we do have limitations on the total number of, uh, swimmers that can be accommodated, uh, in the facility as a result of COVID nineteen. So far, there have been a few people that have, uh, used the facility, uh, since it opened. But those are, um, th- those are much lower numbers, uh, than the, uh, the, the total COVID capacity, if you will. The Galt Area Meals on Wheels program continues to operate, deliver meals to seniors, uh, in that particular program. And so that has been operational since, well, it's always been operational for many years, but it certainly has been operational, uh, since day one in the, uh, COVID crisis. Additionally, uh, the city is participating in a broader program for the provision of senior meals in cooperation with Sacramento County. The program is similar to the Great Plates Program, uh, but is wholly, uh, put together and operated by the county. Uh, includes the cities of Folsom, Ileton, and Galt, the historic FIG cities, uh, if you go back a lot of years in this ci- in, in, in this area. Uh, but it's called Dine-In Sacramento. Uh, two local Galt restaurants, uh, Los, uh, Esletas and Pasosas by Lucia, uh, applied for and are participating in that program. And the city is, uh, working with the county to prepare some, uh, materials that, that will be getting out on our website and our Facebook page to highlight, uh, that program, uh, to our community. Right now, you can, uh, call two-one-one, which is the information line at the, uh, at Sacramento County. And, uh, they'll connect you with that particular program and, uh, be able to get seniors who, uh, uh, need that, uh, assistance, uh, set up with, uh, meal delivery. Uh, and that's, uh, two meals a day, uh, in addition to Meals on Wheels, three, so that would be a total of three meals a day to seniors who would want to participate in that. The fortunate thing about the county program is that they are undertaking all of the setup, all of the requirements, and they are funding the program, uh, on behalf of the, uh, the FIG cities as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tom, I, I have a question. Uh, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify, obviously, you have a lot of people talking about the, uh, the number of cases. And, um, I, I did want to just clarify two things. One is, um, yeah, obviously, the number has climbed very fast. Um, the, the number that shows for the, for us, for Galt, is, is basically cases since day one. So this is not just active cases. This is cases that have, have been active since the beginning. And also, I wanted to clarify that this is for the entire nine-five-six-three-two area code, not just the city limits of Galt, but this is the outlying area of the rural area that still share that zip code. Is that correct, Tom?
No, actually, it's not. What, um, and, and let me just, uh, provide a, a, a little distinction there, because, um, I think at first we were thinking it was all of nine-five-six-three-two. What's attributable to each of the cities is a discrete situs address within the city limits of those cities. So the hundred and seventy-three cases that are attributable, uh, to Galt, uh, when they, when they're talking the city of Galt, uh, are actual situs addresses within our city limits, within our city. And you're right, for, uh, for, probably from, uh, gosh, the beginning of this, say, in, in March until mid-May, you'll, you'll recall, we were at thirteen cases. And we had a lot of, uh, you know, uh, concern, uh, out in the community about still remaining closed and, and the, the statewide health order and, and, and all. But since about the middle of May, uh, until, uh, right now, so for about the si- last six weeks, we've really climbed very significantly, uh, in the city of Galt, within the city limits, uh, alone. And we, we aren't seeing, uh, any, uh, remarkable abatement of, of that growth. And so it's, you know, it's not just Galt, uh, but certainly brought more broadly within our county that brought the state, uh, in to say nineteen counties, including Sacramento, have to dial back the, the, the opening of some of these venues in order to, uh, try to, uh, begin again to, uh, stem the, um, the, the tide. But the information we get from the county is that when they say a hundred and seventy-three cases, uh, in Galt, um, that that is a specific address within the city limits and that anything else in nine-five-six-three-two that's outside of the city limits is attributable to the unincorporated county area.
Well, I, I brought that up because I was just looking at the website. I actually sent you a link. It, it does show on the ci- on the county's website, it shows the map, and it shows, it shows, you know, it shows boundaries. And it says nine-five-six-three-two, and you can clearly see the map goes way outside the city limits. And then it says that this area is a hundred and seventy whatever cases. So I, I'm just, I think, I don't, I'm confused on the, what the website's saying and maybe what they're telling you. But I, it seems to be they're attributing it to the zip code. And not, not to downplay the number, I'm just saying that I, people have been asking me if that includes the rural area. And so I, I only tell them what I see on the website. So I, I don't know.
Yeah, we previously asked them that for clarity. And what they indicated to us at the time was that, um, And what they indicated to us at the time was that if it's, if they're highlighting something in the city, that that is a discrete address within the city limits. But that if you look at all of that particular map, and I I look at that map every day, all of the unincorporated areas of the county are included within some zip code somewhere. And and so what they've tried to do is break it down between city and one of their listings there, in addition to all of the cities, is unincorporated county. And that's made up of all of the zip codes in the county that are fall outside of specific city limits. At least, that's what we've been told in the past.
Okay, so you're saying there's like a, so you're saying there's like a line item that that is consists of unincorporated, and that basically is all the, all the unincorporated areas from all the zip code areas into that bundle? Is that what you're saying?
As they've previously informed us, yes. You can see that.
That's the only question I had. I just was just trying to understand what I was seeing on the site. And then, and of course, the, the, can you, do you have any, I I know you're not, I know you're not by any means an expert on this, but I I just, it's, do you have any insight to why we would see such a rapid number increase in Galt compared to, say, like Folsom or another city that's way bigger than ours? It seemed like, I just, I'm suspicious that their reporting is not as accurate, and so their number seems to stay lower. It just puzzles me that it would climb so quickly here and not in a bigger city that has more people.
So this is clearly empirical, okay? So I'm not, you know, this is based on a compilation of discussions with Dr. Casiri, the county health officer, with other people from county health. It's personal, even my own personal observations as I go north in the county versus being here in Galt. And then it's also informed by a lot of what we read, whether it's regional, you know, news stories out of the Sacramento, Greater Sacramento region that are covering the area. There was a SACB article just last week. I've been interviewed a number of times by the SACB about this. And what I would say is that one of the things that the county health officer attributed the rise to, and we asked specifically in Galt, in fact, our our newly minted PIO specifically asked this question a week or week and a half ago as we sought a broader breakdown of that, that that finite number of attributable cases in Galt. And what they were telling us is that their contact tracing was largely taking it to private events or events, mass, mass events, whether it's at a a home, a private home, or some other location where people are feeling comfortable, they aren't wearing masks, they aren't staying six feet apart, and it's proliferating the spread of COVID-19. And so one of the things that that informed apparently the governor about this was the opening of bars, the opening breweries, things like that, even restaurants, where perhaps things weren't being taken as seriously, or the the PPE measures, I should say, weren't being taken as seriously as perhaps they otherwise should be, and that that's leading to this increase. Then, from the empirical standpoint, or just from an observational standpoint, you know, I've been in El Grove, I've been in Folsom, I've been in Sacramento, and I see a lot more face masks up north than I do down here and even in San Joaquin County. And so I think one of the unfortunate things that occurred was that when Galt was at thirteen cases for six weeks or or so, I mean, I it it just seemed to me that it was at least that long that the, you know, and as we got into this clamor for opening up, open up, open up, it was just open up because we were all sick of being home, but we didn't perhaps open up and follow a proper PPE. So then the last thing I'll say about PPE, which for us are masks. You wear a mask and the other, you're, you, you wear a mask to protect the other person. The other person should wear a mask to protect you. But every day at five PM, I listen to a hospital's report. And it is hospital administrators talking about what they're experiencing within the hospitals themselves. And one of the things they continue to outline is the need for PPE and for the proper dawning and doffing, as they call it, of PPE. They are so serious about it in hospitals that they have observers watch people put it on and watch people take it off because you, you can easily contaminate others. They they watch them put it on so that when they're in hospital, they're not contaminating other coworkers or patients. They watch them take it off and make sure they sanitize and do all the things that they're supposed to do so that they don't bring it home. And the other part of that is that they're constantly asking their staff to ensure that they're exercising proper PPE when they're out at home or going to the grocery store and and all of that. It's very frustrating to deal with this overall pandemic and all that it's done to us and our society. But, you know, it's, wear a dang mask is really, you know, we we can think of a lot of things that have happened over the course of our history as a country. And there have been a lot tougher sacrifices asked of the American population than to simply wear a mask.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I was only just saying that I think there's some, I, I think about Galt being a bedroom community, and I think about now that a lot of people are returning to work, most people are, that that we now have this, 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 this regular daily exodus of people leaving Galt to go to their jobs, and then in turn could be, you know, being exposed and then coming back. So I think there's other factors. What I'm, what I'm getting at is I, I, I agree with what you're saying. I, I, I think that the number of restaurants and things like that that we have here compared to other cities would would warrant saying that, what what I'm getting at is I don't, I don't, I don't like to, I wouldn't like to chalk up our number to saying that that Galtonians are just, you know, far more irresponsible than people in Folsom or Ranch Grande. But there has to be other criteria that's involved in that. It can't just be that, you know, our restaurants were just doing whatever and nobody else was whatever, or our, you know, we didn't have, I mean, we had no events. We had no events here. So I mean, I knew there was other events, and I just, it's hard to believe that that criteria. I just feel like there's some sort of reporting. I feel like Galt is being reported more accurately. So I don't dispute the numbers. I, what I'm disputing is I think that I feel like other areas are not being, are not correct. I think the numbers could be higher, and they're not showing higher. I just have a hard time believing that we're higher than Folsom. It's just, but but anyways, it's all subjective, or it's all, it's all objective. So I, 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 I appreciate your input on it, and and you're right. I mean, it's, you know, no matter what, it's, you know, we've obviously had to backpedal with some some restrictions in light of this. And so, you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll get through it. So I appreciate your update, Tom, on everything. And and I don't know if any other council members have questions, but I'm I'm done with my comments. Thank you.
Any other council member? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Luzano.
Yeah, not just, just a quick comment. Thanks again, Mr. Haglund, for all that you're doing to keep us updated pretty regularly. We get text messages pretty regularly. I won't say daily anymore, but pretty darn close. And so thank you for keeping us updated. And and I would just implore our community, whether you're in our own community or or in your workplace or any any place, to understand that this is going to continue to be an activity. The one last thing I would throw out there, just for sake of at least thinking about it in the future. I I believe, and again, I have no data really to support it other than just what I've observed, I believe also that the amount of available testing now is much different than it was even a month ago. And so, you know, the the more that you test, the more, you know, opportunity there is for reporting. And and not that I'm saying we shouldn't be testing, but I think as you look at the graph from the beginning of the So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And
Just one more.
Do what we can do.
Yeah, maybe one more. In fact, you bring up a good point about testing. And so, you know, this is just from Dr. Fauci, who indicated that certainly the more you test, the more infections you're gonna come up with, right? But what he said that you have to look at is the positivity rate. And if you're positive, ideally, the more testing you do, if you're following all the protocols, all the PPE protocols, your positivity rate drops. But that when, it's when the positivity rate is rising, as it is fairly significantly in Sacramento and San Joaquin Counties, that that cannot be attributable simply to more testing, that the, that the positivity rate is also an indication of this, the communicable spread of this particular disease. And so that's why he emphasizes the need for the wearing of masks and the like.
You know, you know, Tom, I appreciate that. Also, something that I watch is the hospitalization rates. As I'm looking now, we have forty-one ICU cases in the hospitals in Sacramento County, and I think that's the highest it's been. And then we have a hundred and forty-eight in hospitals, so that's higher. So even though the positivity rate's getting higher and the death rate should lower the percentage, we still have a lot of people going to the hospital, and so that's, that's the big concern, I feel.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion.
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Haglund, thank you for giving us a update every week and also give us a update today. The only thing I have kind of information on the county program, and you said there is only two restaurants they applied, or they just, they just selected only two?
No, they, we only had two apply. And so I think that the application materials, Armando may be able to chime in on this just for clarification, but I believe that everyone was invited to apply. There were two that applied. It's not a order-off-the-menu type situation. It's neither Great Plates nor the the Dine-In Sacramento is strictly an order-off-the-restaurant menu type of deal. It, the the nutritional value is very specific. And and so the types of meals they have to prepare for for the seniors is fairly specific. But, Mondo, maybe you could comment on how we got word out to the various restaurants.
It is, there, there's a guideline that was sent out, and a restaurant would have to meet these guidelines to be able to apply for it. So some of them, it was, it was a pretty strict guideline of what they have to meet, kind of like our Meals on Wheels program, where, where, you know, low sodium, those type of things. And two applied. The county asked us if we wanted to choose one or the other. We decided to allow both of them to serve meals. And that's kind of where we are right now.
Armando, how did, Armando, how you send that notice to all the restaurant? By mail, or how you send a DCD requirement?
That, that was by the county. The county, this is a county program, and they sent out the information.
So we don't send any information? That's just the county sending that information to all the restaurant?
I I can get that information for you. I was under the impression that they sent them out to all the restaurants in Galt, but I can verify that with you and get that info back to you.
Yeah, could you please? Thank you. If nobody had no question, then next-gen item is high communication.
No communications.
Okay, next-gen item is city clerk support.
All right, so this is to appoint the youth commissioners. The recommendation is to accept the student appointment selected by the Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentors. Per Galt Municipal Code, Section two-point-eight-five-point-zero-five-zero, student members shall be interviewed by the adult mentor, members of the commission. Each student member shall be submitted for acceptance by the city council and shall serve for a two-year term commencing on June one and ending on May thirty-first. There were five student member vacancies. Applications were received. Those by the adult mentors were Anna Romero, Isabel Sosa, Alexa Clavas, Alexis Gold, and Ashley Rivas. Are there any questions before voting on the selection of the applicants?
I don't have any question. Anybody, any council member, any question?
Maybe they introduce themselves and say hello to us?
Hello. Hi. I'm Alexa Romero and new youth commissioner.
I am Ashley Rivas.
Thank you.
Um, well, hello, I'm Isabel Sosa.
I'm Alexis Gold.
I'm Anna Romero.
Did the city council have any questions?
Yeah, I would like to say something. Just, I can't see their faces because I'm not on the video, but I just, if the girls are listening, I I did see their applications. And you guys look like you're gonna be a great fit for the commission. And I just want to say thank you for for wanting to be involved in something that's so important and and, you know, serving your community in this way. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to thank you all, the youth commissioners that they applied for that.
So it does need a vote.
I was just gonna congratulate him, and I've never seen so many commissioners with their first names all starting with A. And I'd move for approval.
I'd like to second that.
Hi, Gina, may I have a round card, please?
Vice Mayor Luzano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero.
City council, city clerk, you want to owe to address to the office?
Yes, so I need the youth commissioners to go ahead. I'm gonna give you your oath of office. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, Ashley Rivas.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and during such time as I am a student member. as I am a student member
as I am a student member
commission of the Galt Youth Commission. I will faithfully discharge the duties of commission member according to the best of my ability. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations for all the youth commissioners.
Mayor, can I just say something real quick? I'm sorry.
Yeah, good advice.
I congratulations Anna, Isabella, Alexa, Ashley, and Alexis. You're you're gonna be a good addition. I also want to thank, I see John Gordon was on the on the call or on the in the meeting, who is an adult mentor, and then also our own council member Paige Lamson for all that you do to to foster this 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 group and build leadership skills. And I know at the last meeting, we talked about their presentation, and you guys do an awesome job. So the youth, you are in great hands. And and thank you again to Mr. Gordon and also Councilmember Lamson for all you do for this group.
Thank you very much. And obviously, you know, it takes a team. It's not me alone. I have the other adult mentors that are always provide a lot of expertise, a lot of support. So we're very fortunate to have a good team. Looking forward to seeing what we could do this year in light of what we're facing. But I think we're all have a positive attitude, and we're gonna try to figure something out to to serve the cities. Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate it. I, like I said, Mr. Gordon, I I see you're the only one on here and 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 Councilmember Lamson, but it do certainly pass that on to the other adult mentors that may may not be able to be on tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll just mention the other members. We have Lisa Klotz, Harvinder Upol, Tracy Cross, and then Jennifer, oh, I dropped her last name. But we do have two openings, so we do need some adults to put some applications in. So welcome new commissioners, ladies, I guess I can say welcome ladies. Hmm, so.
Thank you.
Having some fun.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next end item is comments by staff.
Mr. Hagler. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off with our human resources director. Any additional comments, Stephanie?
No further comments this evening.
Okay, Armando.
I have nothing. But you know what? I'm sorry. I do have Wally will be running again this weekend, Friday and Saturday, eight thirty to ten. This will be the last weekend for people to catch his show. And then he'll be going away. So if you guys haven't had a chance to come out and see him, come out and see him, and that's about it.
Thank you. Chief Sockman.
The only thing I want to say is that the Lighting of the Heroes, that was an amazing event, great community turnout. Armando, your crew just did a fantastic job, so.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Couldn't have done it without Mike's guys putting it up.
Mike Selling, our public works director.
I just want to congratulate all the new Galt Youth Commissioners. Looks like you got a great group going forward, so. Appreciate that. It just warms the heart to see some young people, you know, being motivated to to serve their community. Thanks.
City clerk Hubert.
Nothing new. Thank you.
Nothing new. Okay. Our city attorney, Kimberly Hood.
Congratulations to youth commissioner, commission members. And then I know staff is working on the CARES Act allocation. So the governor and Department of Finance have released the information on that so that cities can get their allocation. We recall the only the big cities got the direct allocation, so now cities can apply to that from the Department of Finance. So we'll you'll likely be hearing more about that in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you. And then last but not least, Chris Arias, our community development director.
At least for a couple more months. So a couple of things, it was mentioned, you know, our planning commission this week. We do have the Corleone Boulevard Master Plan going forward, so we are seeking a recommendation from the planning.
Another item of note is the subdivision and annexation project that is also going for a recommendation and coming later in August. So and then the big news, I think you all were informed by the city manager that I did give notice, and I will be witness. During work for the city of Manteca, the end of August, beginning of September. I wanted to tell you that it was an extremely difficult decision. And it has nothing to do with how I feel about golf and what golf has done for me. But I'm really excited about an opportunity that I have in Manteca. It was an extremely difficult position. I have a great staff here that I'll miss greatly. The department heads are awesome. It's a really good team. Been great at the city management. You know, you couldn't have picked a better guy to put us through with the ransomware attack than also COVID. You had the right guy at the helm at the right time. It's a really good decision by council. Of course, I will miss your leadership. I still have a couple of months, so I'm not gone yet, but I just want to thank you all for the opportunity that I have.
I still have to get his personnel evaluation. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything specific. Other than I I do want to congratulate Chris. Chris has been a positive influence both amongst the staff and the city generally. He's been with the city for fifteen years. Even before my arrival, I've heard a lot about Chris Arias. And, you know, a lot of good things. And so it's it's been a pleasure for me to work with Chris for the last sixteen or so months, and I I appreciate the ability to have done so. And I know that the department heads will miss him. They'll miss the banter. It won't be nearly as fun to cut down a tree anymore. You know, a lot of a lot of things will miss with 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 Chris's departure to Manteca. But all kidding aside, congratulations, Chris, and we wish you the best of luck, and and we know that we we still have you here for a couple more months.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I will be brief. Mr. Arias, just real quick. We did hear in public comment, like you mentioned, the Corleone Boulevard project or the planning commission is gonna hear next, actually tomorrow, tomorrow, right? What kind of notice did we put out for that planning commission meeting? And was it? Now, what is the legal notice that we're required to put out? And then my second part to that question is, and maybe you, I don't know if you have it in front of you now, but what kind of public input meetings have we had where people have had the opportunity to speak on this? And I will just say this is that I have heard from folks in neighborhoods of the Corleone Boulevard about about their feelings on this. But I just want to get those questions out there to see what kinds of notice and response.
So for for noticing, we are required by the Brown Act to provide the typical seventy-two hour agenda noticing. We did get the agenda out at the beginning of the week. We also got other notices out on social media toward the end of last that were then picked up, I think, at the beginning of this week. So we met the legal requirements for the noticing, but we typically like to go above just the legal noticing requirement. But I want to say that the public outreach that we had for, we did have three public meetings where we allowed the public we had two at the Public Safety Committee meetings. And those were well attended, and we did get a lot of feedback at those. And then the third meeting was at a planning commission meeting. So we had already brought this project to planning commission, I want to say about six months ago. And it was still an opportunity for the public way. And I think for a road plan, and I know this is significant. That is, that's sufficient opportunity, and we still would be able to take comments all during that time. And then we also had a sequel document for public review for thirty days. You know, and that was well published and sent to a variety of places, including them in newspaper. But we do plan to bring that. We are taking a breather. We're not turning around and bringing it to city council right away. So we're July ninth, we are at planning commission, and we're waiting until August eighteenth to bring it to city council to provide more opportunity to get notice out. So we can do it from the public. But you know, Councilman Lozano, I think your comments on SACOG were timely following that public comment. The comments regarding the M T and the change of ways that are altering your travel pattern really plays into what we are planning to do with Corleone Boulevard and match what the region and the state is trying to do with wealth corridors. That's that's what I got.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. And that's all I had really on that topic. I want to thank Mr. Solis and Public Works and everyone else that was involved with the Lights for Heroes events last two weekends ago. I was able to make it out two nights, and and we had quite a few cars come through, and I I don't know what the total number at the end of the day was, but I think they were north of three hundred cars on Friday night and a couple hundred on on Saturday. And and Sunday was pretty busy, at least while I was there. So thank you for for doing that that event for the community. And the the Wally exhibit was second to none. And I know a lot of lot of time and energy in a short amount of time was put into that. And so so thank you so much. I I I appreciate that the event, even in the era, we were able to pull pull something off that and I'll say that it was impressive. And so and I got a lot of feedback from the community on 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 they're happy to put something on, and then on top of that, very impressed with the the. Thank you so much. Like I said, Armando and your staff and police department and your chief, and so I'm out there. And then of course, public works and everybody else that was involved. So thank you so much. Lastly, I just want to congratulate Mr. Arias for your your I don't know if there's a way to deny your resignation letter, but if we could, I'm sure we would. I really appreciate you and and the work that you've put into getting me even before I was on the council, I met with you and and really your your professionalism and your ability to relay some of the work that you do is pretty technical. And and not that none of the other department heads really helped, because everyone really was, but I think you went above and beyond with I had no really, you know, true background in what you do. And so thank you for for all you did to help me along. And and you're certainly gonna be missed. And I sent you an email, and and in it, you know, I I said, you know, it's bittersweet. Because I'm happy for you. I'm glad that you have another opportunity. But you're positioned to be a good ticket to fill. And and we will and we will, we can't deny the resignation letter. We'll certainly miss you and look forward to meeting again one day.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campion.
Yes, thank you. Chris, I just wanted to again congratulate you. You I've known you now for over fifteen years. I remember when we hired you. And it was, you know, it was your personality and your ability to work with people. So it doesn't surprise me that, you know, you have grown in the profession that you have and that you're been accepted by that very fortunate city to the south of us.
I would like to thank you. I mean, I I owe a lot to you, not just giving me this opportunity and hiring me, which was a really good choice, by the way. I really, the training, you know, I don't think I could have gotten the training I got from you and from Galt anywhere else. And I I sincerely appreciate that. So my success is in part due to what you have provided, and thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate that, but I I think you would have done it on your own, but I just wanted to wish you very well and.
Councilmember Lamson.
Yeah, Chris, I'm a little disappointed. I already expressed that to you today. I have never seen anyone handle a crowd like you handle a crowd. You're just so professional and calm, and the way you explain things. It's been quite quite a learning thing for me to watch, and I could still work on that. So I'm hoping for the best for you. I'm hoping maybe you'll come back someday, and but I'm still waiting for that golden shovel. You got a couple, couple of weeks left.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, thank you. First off, I want to thank Parks and Rec, Public Works, PD, everybody that was involved with the Lighting of Heroes event. Unfortunately, I'll admit I did not go. I was busy moving, and it was total crunch time, and I was going from dusk to dawn and trying to move out of my new my old home to my new home, and I unfortunately just didn't get time. But when I would drive by, it was just a line of cars, and it was just great to see how many people were willing to come out and and see it. And I heard nothing but good feedback from everybody who went. I had people that went more than one night. So thank you to Jackie and Armando and Parks and Rec team, Public Works for all their help, everybody that was involved. It was great. Thank you very much. It was something you had threw together last minute. It was awesome. And thank you for that. I also want to say thanks to PD for, you know, all their hard work on the Fourth of July. We had, as everybody knew, we had a lot of proud Americans out celebrating, and I I know you guys were overwhelmed with calls that night. And I know there was a lot of chatter about, you know, why is the PD not responding to this legal firework and this one and that one? But I know that you guys were out there, you know, chasing your tails. Basically, it was crazy that night. So but I appreciate you guys working hard that night and doing what you can to keep all of us safe. And then, lastly, I I want to say, you know, thanks, Chris, for your service to Galt. And I know that one thing I always remember about Chris is he didn't seem to take anything personal. There's many times where, you know, I didn't agree with something that that Chris was proposing, and I and I kind of felt a little bad about it. But he always kind of had, I could look over and see him kind of sitting there, and he'd have this little chuckle while he was sitting there, and he just he just kind of didn't, you know, he just didn't take things personally. He was just all business. And 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 if, you know, he was able to just laugh and and and, you know, be positive about things. And so, you know, I'm sure our city will miss you. I still don't understand why he would go to Manteca, because Galt is obviously the greatest city in this area. Mantica is a step down, in my opinion. So I, but whatever his reasoning is, I, you know. But I but I but I congratulate you, Chris, and it'll be tough to see you go. So, you know, good luck in your endeavors down there. And and we wish you all the best, and and that's really all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I have a few comments. First, I attended the Light for the Heroes display weekend before the last. It was a really nice event with great displays honoring our local heroes. Thank you to the city and thank you, please, department. Secondly, we had had a recent spike in a positive over nineteen last few weeks in local city of Galt and surroundings. I want to remind everyone to continue practicing special distancing, and we see. And the third thing I like to congratulate to all the planning commissioners. And lastly, I like to congratulate and feel sad. And lastly, I like to congratulation and feel sad about Chris, our economic development, our community development director. He have all the qualities, he have all the qualifications, the one thing I, I never forget him, around ten years ago, his dignity, respect, I was a citizen in this Galt, I went to his office, his attitude is same thing today. So he, he does not care what position he have, he does not care what the position of the other person is talking to him. His main quality is dignity or respect and it should be every human being is best. And I, I, I still remember ten years ago, I went to an office, he talking to me the same way when I go his office. And we can miss him, congratulation.
Thank you.
And if any other council member or any comment, then I would like to adjourn that meeting, be safe.
You too, thank you.